Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, May 31st, 2022. We have a meeting announcement. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city website. We are also starting to limit the number of people in chambers since the Allegheny County has increased their COVID level to high. And so we'll start increasing that and all people in the common areas are to wear masks, please. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Okay.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Hold on. Okay. And our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. Our next order of business is proclamations and that we have one to be presented to the Film Office. Please come forward, Dawn. Yes.
Good to see you. Mindhunter, Season Three.
And then one. Someone else has so many. Thank you. Well, first I want to thank the Film Office for all that they do for the city of Pittsburgh. You've got such recognition and such great people to the city of Pittsburgh and of course you'll hear a lot of dollars. So I want to thank you for all that you do. Whereas the Pittsburgh Film Office is a nonprofit organization that promotes the city of Pittsburgh and the greater southwestern Pennsylvania region as an excellent location for movie, television, and commercial production. And whereas in 2007, the Pittsburgh Film Office played an important role in supporting Pennsylvania Film Tax Credit, a program that allows a 25% tax credit to productions that spend at least 60% of the production budget in the Commonwealth. And whereas in 2021, six feature films and five television series were filmed in and around the city of Pittsburgh, adding more than $175 million into the region's economy. And whereas the Pittsburgh Film Office celebrates its 32nd anniversary in 2022, since its inception in 1990, the Pittsburgh Film Office has assisted with more than 200 feature films and television productions filmed in southwestern Pennsylvania that generated an economic impact of more than $2 billion for the entire region. And whereas the Pittsburgh Film Office is celebrating the film industry with its annual fundraising event on Friday, June 3rd, at the Pennsylvanian. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh supports the mission of the Pittsburgh Film Office to market and promote the Pittsburgh area, which leads to a future with more family-sustaining careers in the film industry. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and honor the record-breaking and history-making year of film production in our region. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Friday, June 3rd, 2022 to be Pittsburgh Film Office Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Do we have a motion to approve in a second?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Dawn, can I say two words? You can use mine, yes. You're a little taller.
Just a little bit. Thank you all and again, thank you always for your support. The Film Office only works because we have such great support from our elected officials here in the city of Pittsburgh and of course Allegheny County as well, but you guys have been there for us, girls and guys, have been there for us since the beginning. I want to encourage your continued support of the Film Tax Credit. It just passed out of the Senate Finance Committee to go to $125 million. We desperately need it. We currently have two television series in Pittsburgh and two feature films right now with about five more that want to come. So we really appreciate all you're doing and I hope to see you all Friday night to help celebrate the film industry. And there's Bill Urbanic. I couldn't do this without you today. I didn't know where you were, my esteemed board member who could ever make it happen. Thank you, Bill, for all you do.
Hey Dawn, I have a question.
Thank you all. Yes, sir.
Mindhunter, Season Three. Is it true?
I hope not because it was supposed to be 1980s Los Angeles and we can look like a lot of places, but it's really hard for us to look like LA.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. Do all members want to say something and come up? First let me ask Director Urbanic.
Madam President, I thought I was saying something.
Oh, but I didn't call on you yet. Dawn did.
Oh, sorry.
Come, do you want to come up and say a few words? Thank you. Yeah, whoever you want.
Yeah, thank you for taking the time. Thank you so much for honoring the Film Office today and all the work that Don Kizer has done and the board down there over the past so many years. Special thank you to Bruce Kraus, who early on, as was mentioned in the proc, went and spoke for the Film Tax Credits. So good job, good job to everyone. We are going to be another Atlanta, more like another Hollywood or another New York. So hopefully we keep moving in that direction. And if anybody has the opportunity, come on Friday. Tickets are available.
The council is all invited, so they're going to get phone calls to their offices again today.
PGHPO.com, right?
PGHfilm.org.
PGHfilm. I'm sorry, I was trying to give the word.
I email you things, you don't actually have one of them.
Thank you again, everybody.
Thank you. Did you mention that you were a board member? And our former budget director?
Yes, I was a former Pittsburgh City Council Budget Director. I've also been a board member off and on since 2006.
Thank you. And now members, Councilman?
I just wanted to say congratulations, Dawn. Bill, thanks for the work you do. Anybody who can make the party on Friday, I highly recommend it. I think it's one of the best parties that I've ever been to. I've been to, I think, the last two that we've had. And I love seeing Pittsburgh on the big film. I really do, you know, on the big screen. Not only does it promote the city, but obviously it brings economic growth and, you know, people come here and buy things and stop at our restaurants and stay at our hotels. So you've really turned it into big business and I really appreciate all you do and I look forward to Friday. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus, did you want to finish your thoughts?
Nope. Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle, do you want to say?
No, thank you.
Councilman.
I'll just say that I really appreciate the partnership that the film industry has been a part of with the community, especially on the north side. I know that there's a lot of filming that happens on the north side and, you know, when situations arise, there's always some agreeable outcome. But also, I was acutely aware of films being, you know, movies being filmed in the area because of, you know, some of the, there was like literally a part of one of our bridges that fell onto the scene one time and we had to immediately correct that. So just wanted to thank Domi and also just to, you know, ensure that that bridge is secured for any future filming because, you know, I mean, obviously there's some structural repairs that he made for, you know, cars going over and pedestrians and cyclists, but also, you know, there's, you know, it could be like a piece of conduit. So a lot of these kind of ravines and everything that you all film in are, you know, important to your landscape and unfortunately, a lot of these are, you know, surrounded by bridges that go over top of you. So we've got to make sure that there's some safety there as well. So I'm happy to always try and secure those areas for you all and we'll do our best to, you have the safest area possible to film. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there other members online that want to say anything? No? Okay. All right. Anyone come want to join us for the photo? Members want to join us for the photo?
If you'll have me.
We just can't keep away.
I'm up here. We only do this once a year. See how lovely and how we're here.
And then we have some to be read into the record, Madam Clerk.
Me too.
The Canavan ones and, because they're not here.
Okay, I'll read the remaining.
And, yeah, and then the other ones for Councilman O'Connor, Kraus, and myself.
Okay.
So thank you.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 414. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, May 28th, 2022 to be Guy Junker Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 415. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 31st, 2022 to be Bishop Canavan Athletics Day in the city of Pittsburgh. Council President Kelsmith also presents Bill Number 417. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, June 4th, 2022 to be Charles and Suzie Recaxi Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Councilman Bruce Kraus presents Bill Number 418. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 31st, 2022 to be Brashear Association Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
No move.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations are approved. And we have one will of counsel from Councilwoman Gross and then one from Councilwoman O'Connor. Can we have Councilwoman Gross as first, please? Councilwoman Gross? Is she on? I know she was on.
I am, Madam President.
Oh, there she is.
Can you see me? My camera's not working, I apologize. Typically, the clerk reads the wills of counsel?
Yes.
Were you expecting me to read it?
No, we're expecting you to say you want the clerk to read it. Do you want the clerk to read it?
Yes, Madam President, I apologize. Please.
You want it read in its entirety?
Um, no, you can skip to the bottom half of the whereas clauses. Members all have a copy.
Okay. Councilwoman Gross presents, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby urge the Pennsylvania General Assembly to adopt the Whole Home Repairs Act, Senate Bill 1135, and be it further resolved that a council, that a copy of this will of counsel shall be sent to the Allegheny County delegation of the Pennsylvania General Assembly and Governor Tom Wolf.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Will counsel's approved. Councilwoman?
Thank you, I appreciate it. And I want to note for the record that this bill was also presented in the House and, if I'm not mistaken, it was presented in the House with 20% of the members signing on as co-sponsors. But just late last week, it was too late for us to pivot and adjust this will of counsel. So it is a bill that will create a fund at the state level that can be awarded to local counties to help residents fix their homes, right? Just, you know, at the most basic level, for weatherization, for accessibility, for habitability, and to use federal funds, to use state funds into this trust fund that will be created at the state so that people can stay in their homes. It is widely supported across the Commonwealth. I think it is uniquely positioned to be helpful here in Pittsburgh where some 70% of our housing stock is close to or over 100 years old. And we have so many residents and so much of our housing stock, which is in desperate need of exactly these kinds of repairs. So I really appreciate every one on council supporting the will of counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from, any other members? All in favor of the will?
Aye.
Aye. Will counsel's approved. And next we have Councilman O'Connor. Councilman O'Connor?
Yes, yeah, Madam President, you can just read the last paragraph and I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 420. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh urges the General Assembly of Pennsylvania to support and swiftly enact House Bill 1393.
Councilman O'Connor?
Just briefly, this is a bill for fentanyl strips that they are not known as accessories. So it will ultimately save a lot of people's lives and help prevent cocaine and other organizations that are supportive of it. So I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Will counsel's approved. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to public comment, but prior to public comment, we're going to have our Solicitor Dan Friesen give an update on public comment and some of the things that we've been talking about. Solicitor, City Council Solicitor Dan Friesen.
Thank you, President Kelsmith. So as has been mentioned, we're going to be, we're making changes to public comment. We're working with the Law Department in the creation of the new rules. It's really more so a clarification of existing rules than anything else. And I'm just going to, I have a duty to inform people, clarify if you will, about what's against the rules of counsel. Now, first, I'm going to say, when it comes to public comment, I think everybody here respects and appreciates anyone who's willing to take the time and energy to come down here and redress their grievances with their government. That is appreciated. We take notes, we listen. There have been many a great insight from public comment. That said, it's always been the case that it's against the rules to use public comment to harass, defame, or expouse dangerous information or hate speech. These are not things that are protected. Because a word is in the dictionary doesn't mean that it's not profanity. I could go stand here with the dictionary and read every profane word in the dictionary that's still profanity. So with that in mind, if we open the door to allowing people to speak on racism, sexism, colorism, sizism, then we open the door for anybody to come in and speak those things. And so it's important that we close that door and just give the public fair warning that harassment and defamatory and dangerous speech is not protected speech for public comment. The point of the public comment is for deliberative purposes so that we can do the people's work about bills that are before us or that might be before us. So it is also not an appropriate place to solicit the government for a private contract or for private payment. There's a process for that. And so moving forward, we're going to enforce these rules for the betterment of a civil society for all of us, to make sure that this is a Pittsburgh for all. And that's all I've got to say about it today. Questions? Yes?
Yeah, thank you.
From the members?
Yeah, from members.
Yeah, just, I don't know a better way to say it, friendly reminder. Any change to the rules, even if they're just, even if they're just grammar or punctuation, is a legislative effort that goes through the council for a vote.
Correct. Absolutely, yes. When I say I'm working on them, I'm alerting you that I believe we will be presenting you with something for your deliberation. It's not a unilateral, thank you for that clarification.
Right. It's just, I think it's important for the public to know that the councils, the rules of council are our public way of explaining how the governing body governs itself. And I think that's just an important statement to put out there for the public at large to understand what we mean when we're referencing the rules of council. They are the guidelines by which the governing body governs itself.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Coghill.
Yes, Counselor. I guess my question is, who will be governing as to, you know, what is proper to say or not during the meeting?
Sure. Whomever is chairing the meeting is the ultimate arbiter of how that meeting is run. They also ultimately hold the responsibility and the consequences of how that meeting is run. So while we don't compensate our chairs more than any other council member, there are municipalities who do that because of that extra work and that extra responsibility, but that's not how.
And if the chair were to find something improper, they then stop the person?
In our current rules, there's a series of things that can be done. And, you know, a lot of this is in Robert's Rules of Order, Chapter 20, Section 61, if the public is interested in doing some of their own research. But the point of this is to get the people's work done, to deliberate on matters that are before council. Again, of concern is very general and open. So for regular meetings, when people come and speak of things of general concern, that's not going to change. But when it comes to special meeting, or the standing committee meetings where we have an agenda that we have to get through, we might ask people to be more specific about what's on the agenda for those meetings. But again, these are suggestions, it's just something we're working through. But to put you all on notice, since I don't get to talk to you all as a group very often and this is an important thing, President Kelsmith asked me to kind of just bring you up to speed as to where we're at with that. Any other questions from members? Online?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, thank you for your attention.
We do have a roles committee.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And we do have a roles committee, the task force like you had when you were president. We do have one. And Madam Clerk, I'm not even sure who's on there anymore. I know Councilwoman Strasburger. Your mask, sorry. There you go.
Madam President?
Yeah.
I'm happy to volunteer if you.
Yeah, I think, are you on there?
We, we did a major revision to the rules, as Madam Clerk knows, a number of years ago with the help of Kelly Mystic when she was still here. And it was substantive, I mean, and they hadn't, they had been sort of patched so many times over the years that they really needed a major review. And so myself, Councilwoman Rudiac, Councilman O'Connor, and you.
Yeah.
We did it.
And since then, we started a new one and it's you, Councilwoman Strasburger. I think, I thought Councilwoman Wilson, I'm not sure if it's Councilwoman Gross. Do you remember? We put it together?
I think it was before my turn.
No, 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 you, no, it's not.
I'll let you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did put it together right before the pandemic.
But I'm happy to volunteer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll be for sure. Okay, with that said, and I do want to say, when I hit the gavel, I talk to the Solicitor before I do, so I'm making sure I'm good. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of counsel states that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity threats will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And I don't, do I have a registered speaker? I have Naomi Mullen as the first registered speaker. Is she online? She's not online? Is Molly, I guess, she's not online either? So we have no one online? Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address city council? Good morning, Ms. Brown.
Can I take it down or do I have to speak through this? Do I have to speak through this?
No, you can take it down.
I can take it, all right. First, I wanted to start off that right doesn't wrong anybody. And for Mr. Urbanic, yesterday, when Ms. Smith said for the community to come up and take a picture, well, I started and then I seen Dr. Miller, wish, I wish he was here today to hear you. Dr. Miller didn't want to go. I said, well, I'm going up there because I want to tell him off. So I go up and I'm standing there and I'm talking to him and I'm telling him about when Shirley Jones came here to Pittsburgh and had left the room and I went behind her. I was out there talking to Shirley Jones. She was asking, in fact, talking to me when Sergeant Aron ran out there. Get away from her! Get away from her, Ms. Brown! And I said, I started arguing with her and I said, hey, wait a minute. I said, don't you ever do this again. And I'm fussing at her and she said, I must do what I'm told to do. And I asked who was it? She didn't tell me then. But Brandon, yesterday, when I, when he got, I took the picture, this is what he said to me. He said, Ms. Brown, I didn't tell her to go out there and do that to you. In fact, he was telling her that Shirley Jones had hit on him. So I'm smiling, yeah, yeah, Shirley hit on you. But he is a nice looking man and he had black hair then. It's been years since she's been here. Okay. If I feel that I'm wrong, I will come to you and tell you. And I may have been wrong about what I said, that he did it, because I want you to know when Ms. Carlisle was here, she was back there in the back of the room, in the lunchroom, talking to another employee and she was talking about Nat King Cole had died. And she said that in. Well, Sergeant Aron went to McNilly and filed charges, tried to file charges against Ms. Thing because she said she was ethnically intimidating her. So yes, what you say, if I say the word in, then I'm intimidated against two? You're telling me that it's a word? Yes, it is a word. And when I was explaining, I was telling you what my father said that word was. See, the thing with this, you're trying to pretend like you want to hear what we got to say. Then you're going to make rules that we can't say nothing unless it's on the agenda. Well, last week, there wasn't no agenda in here. I went out and asked for agenda and they didn't bring it until the meeting was over. So that meant if I don't have agenda, I can't say nothing? You don't do, you don't do your office work like you should. I worked in the office and I know you're very lackadaisical about your paper, bringing the papers. And I was upset the time, I gave all the citizens in here the proclamation and the agenda. I go back and ask for it and when I go back, I can hear your clerk holler, well, Ivan gave them all to away. Well, sir, I mean, but what am I supposed to do? I started giving away because it would be piles, piles of paper that was being thrown away.
There being no further speakers in the audience. We're online. We'll move on to our next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
Learn the papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 394, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission's Livability Through Smart Transportation Program to provide funding for the West End Trolley Trail. The grant proposal includes an ask of $800,000 with a local match of $325,000 to come out of the West End Trolley Trail Fund for a total project cost of $1,125,000. Bill Number 395, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement for Services During Construction with Trans-Associates Engineering Consultancy for the CBD Signals Phase Four Project at a Cost Not to Exceed $2,419,451.39, An Increase of $138,312.15 from the Previously Executed Agreement. Bill Number 396, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing, Resolution Number 855, Entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capital Budget and the 2012-2017 Capital Improvement Program by Transferring $1,000 Within District Four Neighborhood Needs from Brookline Memorial Park to Volunteers Field. Bill Number 397, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 719, Entitled, Providing for an Agreement and/or Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for Various Projects in Connection with the Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District Four, and Providing for the Payment of Costs Thereof by Transferring $1,000 Within Neighborhood Four Within District Four Neighborhood Needs from Brookline Memorial Park to Volunteers Field.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 398, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capital Budget and the 2020 CDBG Program and the 2020-2025 Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Public Safety Training Facilities by $191,910 and Increasing Major Developments by $191,910. Bill Number 399. Bill Number 399, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 796, Entitled: Resolution Authorizing a Corporation Agreement or Agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh in Connection with the URA's Application for a Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program Grant of Up to $1 Million for the Oliver Bath House Rehabilitation Project to Increase the Grant Amount Up to $200,000, $200 Million in Authorized Spending. Sorry. Bill Number 400, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 13th Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, 2545 East Hills Drive, 2514 Park Hill Drive, and 2508 Park Hill Drive, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 401, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 20th Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, 46 Herschel Street, Westonway, Hanker Street, 922-920, and 915 Elkhorn Street and Fairview Avenue, Council District Number Bill Number 402, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 12th Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 124 North, Lots 281, 282, and 283, and Block 125B, Lots 281 and 283, Meadow Street and Lincoln Avenue, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 403, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 26th Ward of the city, Block 77N, Lots 103 and 104, 243 and 247, Kennedy Avenue, Council District Number 1. Bill Number 404, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned property in the 12th Ward designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 125C, Lot 46, 639 Lincoln Avenue, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 405, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, in and to the publicly owned properties in the 5th Ward designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Block 26N, Lot 16A and 17, Wichita Way, and 3348 Milwaukee Street, Council District 6.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, you have a waiver for Rules of Council for Bill 398. Did you want to make that?
That's Madam President. I'd like to motion to waive Rule 8 so that Bill 0398 can appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second with discussion, please.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross.
Yes, thank you very much. Madam, or Madam Clerk, Councilwoman Gross, could you amend your motion to also include 399, which is a grant application for the continued restoration of the Oliver Bath House?
Yes, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
So, sorry, withdraw the first motion and just make the second one, Madam Clerk. Like to withdraw my last motion.
You could just add.
And I'd like to motion to waive the Rules 8 so that both 0398 and 0399 can appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda.
We have a motion.
Councilwoman, thank you.
We have a second?
Second with more discussion.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate your assistance. I know Jake Pollock, who is the Director of OMB, watches the council meetings. I'd just like to have a little better understanding of Bill 398, maybe if he wouldn't mind giving me a call later on, at a time when everything is about public safety and increased gun violence and crime. And I'm just curious as to why we're reducing funding towards the public safety training facility. I think this is the second bill now that has been introduced to do. It could be completely innocent, I'm not suggesting that it isn't, but I'd just like to have a little better understanding as to why we're reducing funding to the public safety training facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'd like to know the same. Thank you. Anything else from members? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills will appear on tomorrow's, or, yeah, tomorrow's Standing Committee Agenda. Thank you. And Councilwoman Carous, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
And I'm clerk.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 406, Resolution Amending Resolution 828 of 2019, which authorizes the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service Commission to enter into an agreement with Connect Your Care LLC for services relating to the administration of the City of Pittsburgh's Flexible Spending Account Program by extending the existing contract for another year.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 407, Resolution Authorizing the city to accept a payment of $30,000 from Prime Gov Solutions as an amicable resolution of a contract dispute. Bill Number 408, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement and/or Existing Agreements for Consultant Services, but not eliminate two auditing accounting and technical services for the City Controller's Office at a Cost Not to Exceed $150,000.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 409, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter into several sponsorship agreements for the rich as Calgary Great Race. Bill Number 40410, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into sponsorship agreements for the City of Pittsburgh Independence Day Festival.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 411, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordnance is the Certain Site known as the Troy Hill Firehouse located at 1800 Lay Street in Troy Hill in the 24th Ward of the city.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings, I have two communications, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number 412, Communication from City Controller Michael Lamb and the Citizens Police Review Board Executive Director Elizabeth Pittinger, submitting a performance audit of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police dated May of 2022. Bill Number 413, Communication from Jeff, Jake Pollock, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting acting pay approval on behalf of the city, on behalf of the Departments of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection for Quincy Joan and the Controller's Office for Beth Ann Portrick per the acting pay policy revised in June of 2018.
Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved on both bills' brief discussion.
Brief discussion. I have something to say, too, so thank you, Councilman.
I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, on 413, we list Jake Pollock as the Acting Director of OMB. He's been confirmed. Just, I know it's...
Clerical.
So noted.
Clerical.
Yes, that's clerical. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from members? I would just like to point out that I'm going to work with the solicitor on legislation that before these communications, these audits are released to the public and to the media that they are, that the controller has an opportunity to present to City Council so that we have questions or things we'd like to add or ask. We can have those before the public, and so we'll work on that legislation. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Approved. And then now we'll move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports to committee for final action. We'll go to Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 387, Report to the Committee on Finance and Law for May 25, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 308, Resolution Authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Julie and Kirby Christie in the amount of $50,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 309, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with CSI Corporate Security and Investigations LLC for investigative services relating to the Fern Hollow Bridge incident for an amount not to exceed $17,500. Bill Number 343, Resolution Authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Flaherty, Fardo, Rogel, and Amyk in the amount of $100,000 related to the full and final settlement of a case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number 344, Resolution Authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of O'Brien, Coleman, and Wright in the amount of $30,000 relating to the full and final settlement of a litigation filed in the District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number 345, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the city clerk on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Mark GoPlurwirt to conduct a statistical analysis of current voting patterns in the city at a Cost Not to Exceed $7,700. Bill Number 358, Resolution Authorizing an Interdepartmental Transfer in the amount of $260,000 from Personnel, Salaries and Wages Department of Public Works, Bureau of Operations to Personnel, Salaries and Wages Department of Public Works, Bureau of Environmental Services. This transfer is necessary to allow for the hiring of 15 seasonal part-time loaders to assist refuse collection services. Bill Number 359, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the LED Safety Trust Fund and for Setting the Conditions for the Deposit of Fundings into the Account and for the Expenditures of Said Funds.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed, when they vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, noes, zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. It moves us on to Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services. Councilman O'Connor?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilwoman Lavelle, too.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 388, Report to the Committee on Public Safety Services for May 25, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 360, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency's COVID-19 Crisis Emergency Medical Services Grant in the amount of $37,237 and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose. Bill Number 361, Resolution Providing for the issuing of a warrant in favor of CI Technologies Inc. in the amount of $17,000 for a one-year renewal of the license for IA Pro Professional Standards Software and Related Technologies for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police.
Thank you. You, thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, noes, zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 389, Report to the Committee on Public Works for May 25, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 104, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city and through the city's Department of Law to adopt certain settlement terms and enter into a settlement agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway, Manchester Citizens Corporation, Northside Leadership Conference, and Rail Pollution Protection Pittsburgh in order to resolve claims arising from the application of the Norfolk Southern Railway Company for approval to reconstruct the crossing of the North Avenue-Brighton Bridge docketed at the, of the Public Utility Commission and from Northside Leadership Conference at all versus the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission's appeal in the Commonwealth Court. Bill Number 355, Resolution granting unto Hudson Millwood LP their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a subsurface stormwater management facility, storm roof leaders, ADA compliant metal grate, and a canopy at 419 Millwood Avenue in the 5th Ward, 6th Council District of the city. Bill Number 356, Resolution Authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, Multi-Module Transportation Fund for the construction of the Sylvane Avenue Non-Motorized Trail in the amount of $1,763,824 and authorizing expenditures for this stated purpose.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Ayes, nyes, noes, zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. It moves us on to Councilman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 390, Report to the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for May 25, 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 235, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordnance is the Certain Site known as the Rode of Shalom located at 4905 Fifth Avenue in Shadyside, 7th Ward of the city. The owners of the property support the nomination.
Thank you. You have heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Briefly?
Councilman Kraus.
I just want to say that Rode of Shalom is truly one of the most magnificent structures in the city of Pittsburgh, and it is certainly worthy and deserving of historic designation for preservation for all time, and I'm more than happy to support the bill.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other thing, any further from members?
I'll just make a comment, Madam President, if that's okay.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Kraus. I think most people look at the structure and assume it's already designated as historic, so I'm wholeheartedly in support of it. It is a gem in the city of Pittsburgh, and I appreciate all the work that Preservation Pittsburgh and the congregation did to bring it to this point, and I'm grateful to council colleagues for supporting this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you for cheering the hearing, and I will just say the same thing, that I was surprised it was not already designated historic because it is such a magnificent structure and so important to Pittsburgh's history. So the bills, okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Committee on Urban Recreation.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman Cockhill.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 391, Report to the Committee on Urban Recreation for May 25th, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 369, Ortenesses Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Article XI Parks and Playgrounds, Chapter 473 Use Regulations, Section 47304 Recreational Activities, by Adding Language That Updates the Camping Regulations in City Parks.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, I'm just going to thank Councilman Wilson for putting this forward. I am going to continue to say that I hope that we become independent of using organizations to use our parks, our free parks. So, but I am thankful that you put this forward and started the process. Thank you. Any further comments? On, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills, the bill having received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. Congratulations, Councilman Wilson. And Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 392, Report to the Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management for May 25th, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 362, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 32 of 2022, Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with OST, Inc. for Short-Term Emergency Professional IT Staffing Resources as Needed to Fulfill a Number of Critical IT and Device-Related Projects by Revising the Budget Year and Costs. Bill Number 363, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 374, Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspection and Innovation and Performance to Enter into an Agreement or amended to Existing Agreements to Purchase a Cellar Civic Platform and a Cellar Citizens Access Subscription and Cloud Hosting Services so as to Extend the Contract an Additional Year into June 30th of 2023 and Increase the Not-to-Exceed Cost from $1,310,475.13 to $1,331,647.65.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
I'm present.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 393, Report to the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for May 25th, 2022 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number 357, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the Director of the Department of Finance and/or the Director of the Department of Public Works on behalf of the City to Execute as Necessary Instruments for the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants in Favor of the Allegheny County Sanitary Authority to Permit the Installation of Green Infrastructure Projects on Designated Vacant City-Owned Vacant Lots, Park Sites, and Ride-Aways as Funded by Alcasan Grow Grants awarded to the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority and Further Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure and/or the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into any other Necessary Agreements between the City, PWSA, and/or Alcasan necessary to Implement the Grow Grant Projects for the Benefit of the Public.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. That moves us on to motions and resolutions. And I have a few meeting announcements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 1st, 10:00 a.m., council will hold our Standing Committee Meeting. Speaker Registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. To Register to Speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138. And the meeting will be chaired by Councilman Lavelle. On Thursday, June 2nd, with sessions at 3:00 and 3:30, council will hold a briefing with the Port Authority of Allegheny County to receive updates on the Bus Rapid Transit Project. And I do want to mention that the Rules Committee is formed. We formed it a while back. And it is Councilman Burgess, Councilwoman Gross, Councilman Kraus, and Councilman Wilson. And I do believe that there was a couple meetings. But if not, Council, and I probably asked Councilman Burgess to chair that, but he has been very busy, I think, with a lot of things. So Councilman Kraus, if you and he could work that out, I would appreciate that. Because I know he's really busy with the Wilkinsburg project, which I'd also like to receive an update for City Council on the status of that. And is there anything from members?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman Gross.
I just wanted to mention for the record how distressed some of the residents in my district are about the Norfolk Southern Settlement that we passed today finally. Again, we were receiving emails to delay today's vote. And I just wanted to remind the citizens that these bills had been delayed many times. There was extensive legal proceedings. And that we really need the state to hear from residents. We are, you know, there are many ways that the state preempts us and orders us to do things that we would rather not do. And this is one of them. It's certainly from my residents. But I would like to just say that this is the kind of thing, if you indulge me, I want to read just a couple of sentences and some lines from some of the emails that I've received. One resident said, "A vote to facilitate the quadrupling of rail traffic through our dense urban corridor, simultaneously enabling double-stacked loads with sharply reduced stability, would increase both the frequency of rail accidents and the severity of the consequences." These are the things that are deeply concerning to citizens. I have emails talking about how much that increased tonnage increases air pollution. I have emails saying that federal regulations allow these rail freight to carry items like liquid methane through the heart of our city, extremely dangerous loads. We know from the recent incident in Harmer within the last week that the tracks are not always in the shape they should be. The safety crossings are not always what they should be, right? In Harmer, it was a train that struck a, a construction vehicle that was in the train rideaway. At first, we were told that no crude oil had spilled into our waterways. And now we've received in less than 24 hours an news update from the EPA that 3,000 gallons of sweet crude actually did release into the Allegheny River upstream from our water intake, in fact. So it is distressing. And I just wanted to be sure that we had here in our record just some of the comments that were appearing from citizens. We've heard them at public meetings. Councilman Wilson hosted a public meeting on the North Side. I've heard it many times previously in public meetings in my own district. And it's incredibly frustrating. And it's frightening for the residents that we represent. And I just wanted to be sure that we recorded that in this discussion. Thank you for your time, for my time.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything else from members? Councilman Cockhill.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to comment on Chief Schubert's retirement. I first want to congratulate him on a stellar career with the Pittsburgh Police Force. I know how much it means to him. I've known Scott since he was a kid. I mean, we grew up together. And we always had the right temperament, you know? I feel he was doing so many good things for the Pittsburgh Police Force. That being said, I will say that the Steering Committee, I found their report to be irresponsible and destabilizing to this department at a time when that's the last thing that we need. Many, many issues that will be facing this police department, I felt that Chief Schubert understood them and knew how to deal with them and knew what to expect. So, but most of all, I just really wanted to congratulate Scott on his career. You know, whether he continues to work somewhere else or not is, of course, his decision, but he has a very impressive resume. We will miss him. And just wanted to say again, thank him for all he's done for the city.
Thank you. Anything else from members? So I just want to say two things. I want to first also acknowledge Chief Schubert and the work that he has done in the City of Pittsburgh, especially his tremendous work in building police community relations. I'll have a lot more to say when, once we do. We have a proclamation we're going to do together as a council. And we're going to have an event for him, a farewell appreciation luncheon[1531.98]